Okay, Nova?
Okay. I'd like to go ahead and call to order the Kodiak Island Borough Assembly Regular Meeting of Thursday, May 2nd, 2024 at 6:30 PM, and we are in the Assembly Chambers. First thing is the invocation with Major Dave Davis of the Salvation Army.
Greetings on this dust-free day in Kodiak. Join me, please. Gracious heavenly Father, we bow our hearts and minds before you. We give you the praise and glory. Father, we ask your continued blessing upon our mayor, our Assembly members and staff as they continue to work for the betterment of the whole Kodiak Island Borough. So, Father, we give you the praise and glory and ask your continued blessings. In Jesus' name, we pray amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We are gathered on the traditional homeland of the Supiaka Lutik people, and we acknowledge the ten tribes of the Kodiak Lutik region. We recognize the Lutik culture that enriches our community to this day. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ames.
Here.
Mr. Griffin.
Here.
Mr. Lidu.
Here.
Mr. Sharret.
Here.
Mr. Smiley.
Here.
Mr. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Whiteside.
Here.
Mayor Arnt.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Uh, next is approval of the Agenda and Consent Agenda. Scott?
Move to approve the Agenda and Consent Agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. For everyone's information, the Consent Agenda consists of the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of April 18th, 2024. Next item is Citizens' Comments. This is for agenda items not scheduled for public hearing and general comments. The local number is 907-486-3231. Toll-free number is 1-855-492-9202. Ask you to sign in, state your name for the record, turn on the microphone before speaking, address all remarks to the Assembly as a body and not to any member thereof. If calling in, please turn off any listening devices to prevent feedback. Anyone wishing to come forward under Citizens' Comments, please do at this time.
Greetings, long-time NOSI. I'm Major Dave from the Salvation Army. I wanted to, uh... Put something out on the table for consideration. I just recently came back from Anchorage where the Salvation Army was doing an emergency disaster, uh, review. So, uh, we're pretty for... Have a lot in common with Hawaii, and the review had to do with, uh, the volcanoes, the floods, uh, the fires that have been over there recently. Uh, a lot of our commonality was part of that review in my own head, not... Not on their table, but, uh, what I want to mention to the Assembly is the Salvation Army is the community food bank. I'm six feet above the water. And, uh, the first nine years I was in Kodiak, we had a tsunami warning every Wednesday, but we never had an evacuation. I'm on the verge of my ninth year back, and we've had an evacuation every year. My concern is that food bank. I can continue to do the dailies where it's at, but we really need to consider about moving something on higher ground, uh, so that we would have a... A safety venue, a, a, a fallback.
Backup.
To not have a fallback is not very wise. Uh... I have ideas, uh, but first we need to get, uh, some kind of collaboration, uh, whether it's, uh, the Borough, the city, and the Salvation Army or some... We need to do something to, uh, in, uh, the review for the Hawaiian, uh, emergencies. They have a Salvation Army, they have a Red Cross, they have basic responders, but for real help, it takes, uh... Takes about two weeks. They have to collect things, they gotta evaluate, they... There's a process, they don't just... There's a process of accumulating help, uh, coordinated efforts, uh... Takes two weeks. If we just get a little water, it's gonna be s... At least seventy-two hours before somebody... And, uh, whatever happens to us that affects Anchorage is gonna be longer. We need to be self-sufficient, and I need to get some kind of a fallback food, some kind of a joint effort to make that happen, whether it's property, whether it's, uh, some kind of storage. I mentioned it to the city at their last one, so there's a couple ideas out there. So, I just wanna plant the seeds. So, thank you for considering this.
Thank you for bringing it up. Anyone else wishing to speak under Citizens' Comments, please do at this time.
Hi, good evening, thank you. I'm back again.
Go ahead and turn, is that?
It is turned on.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, I just need to get closer.
You can pull it down to you.
Thank you.
Make it, there you go.
Tonight I bring you another letter from another student, um, as a testimony to the...
And your name again, for the record?
Nancy Castro.
Thank you.
Dear Kodiak Island Borough, please consider your decision of decreasing the funds for the Jump Start program for the Kodiak College. This scholarship money is very important to many students, especially students with unusual circumstances or who are supporting themselves, like myself. Working a full-time job on top of doing college classes is very hard work. College is something I decided to do in order to find better, higher-paying jobs because I'm supporting myself. By not decreasing the funds for the Jump Start program, you can eliminate the financial stress for many students. Students may be paying a lot for other bills like rent, insurance, utilities, and any of... Anytime their car breaks down. Many of us students believe that college is the key to more money in the future by getting a job that requires college, but we are struggling financially while going to college. The Jump Start program money has lifted a lot of weight off my shoulders since the last two years I have been in a college. I was able to spend my hard-earned money from work on many important things like groceries, rent, and car. I'm not saying college is not important, but basic things we need to leave like food and roof over our heads should be prioritized over our college tuition. Without these basic things, we will not be able to attend college. Thank you for reading my letter. Please reconsider your decision. Sincerely, Nicole Del Carmen.
Thank you, Nancy. Appreciate you doing that. Anyone else wishing to come forward under Citizens' Comments, please do at this time.
I'll use my phone as a timer.
I'm not worried.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Louise Sarangan, and I am reading this letter to express my deep gratitude for the Jump Start program at Kodiak College and to advocate for its continued support and funding. As a full-time freshman in college, I have relied on various forms of financial aid, including FAFSA and scholarships, to pursue my educational aspirations. Among these resources, the Jump Start program has played a pivotal role in providing additional funding that has helped me reduce the cost of my college tuition. With the support of the program, I was able to enroll in classes, purchase textbooks, and cover other educational expenses. Moreover, as my parents went through medical issues and were unable to pay for my tuition, the program has contributed an amount and lessened my family's financial expenses. Instead of worrying about the costs, I was able to focus, perform well in my classes, and maintain my GPA. As I reflect my time at Kodiak College, I am deeply grateful for the support and resources provided by the Jump Start program. It has been a lifeline for me, allowing me to pursue and reach my educational goals and aspirations. I firmly believe that a little help from this program makes a big impact, empowering students to overcome financial barriers and enabling them to pursue their careers. By investing in this program, you are not only investing in the educational success of individual students, but also the future prosperity and well-being of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to come forward under Citizens' Comments?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rian Kapau, and I am a freshman at Kodiak College, and I am reading this letter to express my gratitude for the Jump Start program and to encourage the student... I mean, the members to consider the crucial impact it has on students like myself. As a fresh-time freshman college student, I am deeply grateful for the invaluable support and financial assistance provided by the Jump Start program. First, I would like to briefly mention how the program helped ease my financial problems my family is currently facing that affects my financial needs for my education. My father right now is receiving treatment for a health condition that limits his ability to contribute to our financial needs, piling more medical expenses to our list of financial obligations. And as a daughter of immigrant parents, they also still have an obligation to send money to our relatives back in the Philippines, and balancing these responsibilities has set significant strain on our finances, especially now as I pursue my college education. Making requests for financial assistance for my parents, my last resort. The Jump Start program really helped lessen the financial burden as I start my first year college. It covered the essential expenses such as tuition fees and other class materials that often cost a lot of money, and knowing that these expenses were partially covered by the program lessened my worries and allowed me to concentrate more on my studies, while also still seeking for more financial aid by applying to other scholarships. And I believe that this program empowers students like myself to take significant steps toward achieving their educational goals, because for some students, the intimidating costs of college education may... May discourage them from even considering college, although having a college degree is not the main key of having a successful life, it does serve as a foundational tool, if used wisely, to be more likely successful in the future. So, once again, I would like to give thanks to the opportunities and to urge you to please continue supporting the Jump Start program. Doing so will not only benefit the lives of the current and future students who are financially challenged, but will also reflect the school district's commitment to providing more educational opportunities to aspiring students. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to come forward? Are there any calls, Nova? No, okay. We'll go ahead and move on. Next item is Awards and Presentations. First one is Proclamation and Recognition of the National Salvation Army Week. It's from the Office of the Mayor, Kodiak Island Borough, Kodiak, Alaska. In recognition of the National Salvation Army Week, May 13th to 19th, 2024, whereas in 1954, the first National Salvation Army Week was declared by the U.S. Congress and proclaimed by President Dwight D. Eisenhower as a reminder to Americans to give freely of themselves in service to others. And whereas the Salvation Army members continue their compassionate tradition of helping wherever there is hunger, disease, destitution, and spiritual need, and provide for those in the most need without discrimination, and whereas the Salvation Army has one agenda to meet human need without discrimination, and whereas assist approximately twenty-three million Americans annually, serve in a hundred and thirty countries around the globe, and whereas with over 1.5 million members consisting of officers, soldiers, and adherents, the Salvation Army has pursued their mission since 1865, and whereas the Salvation Army should be commended for its selfless dedication to helping meet the physical and spiritual needs of people across Alaska. Now therefore, I, Scott Arnt, Mayor of the Kodiak Island Borough, do hereby recognize the valuable service of the Salvation Army to the Kodiak Island Borough and urge everyone to express their appreciation to the Salvation Army for their good works and to follow their example of service, a cause greater than themselves. Thank you. I'd like to present this.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for this proclamation, uh... The amount of support that we get from the Borough and throughout the Borough, uh, opportunities to participate and to help, uh... Thank you. It's very humbling.
Thank you. It's always a pleasure to have you come here. Thank you. Next is a proclamation declaring May 5th through 11th, 2024, as the Fifty-Fifth Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week. This is Office of the Mayor, Kodiak Island Borough, Alaska. Proclamation, declared May 5th through the 11th, 2024, the Fifty-Fifth Annual Professional Municipal Clerk Week, whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at all levels, and whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas the Professional Municipal Clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk through participation in educational programs, seminars, workshops, and annual meetings of their state provisional county and international professional organizations, and whereas it is most appreciative that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk. That's a mouthful. Now therefore, I, Scott Arnt, Mayor of the Kodiak Island Borough, do here recognize the week of May 5th through 11th, 2024, as Professional Municipal Clerk Week, and further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerks, Borough Clerk Nova, Deputy Clerk Lena, and Assistant Clerk Irene, and to all professional municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Nova, would you come forward, please? Always a pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any committee reports? Seeing none, I'll move on, um, to Borough Manager Report. Seema, you have the honor.
Thank you, Mayor, and Assembly Members. Um, the first part on the Managers Department, I left the budget calendar alone. Uh, Amy did meet with the KISA this week to address the sections of the lease about the types of guns authorized at the range, and there should be an update on that next week. And the Emergency Management Training, Kodiak Island Borough, um, will be hosting Texas A&amp;M Engineering Extension Services, or TEACs, June 10th and 11th for a training, and for upcoming travel, Amy will also be gone, uh, next week, and, um, Dave will be sitting at the desk for the work session. In Community Development, the, um... On April 30th, the Community Development Director, Chris French, and the Associate Planner, Joe Gotchmo, were on KMXT's Talk to... Uh, Talk of the Rocks to discuss the Hazard Mitigation Plan and the upcoming release of the Hazard Mitigation Community Service on May 3rd, and there will be a Planning and Zoning Commission Work Session on May 8th. For Assessing, the Board of Equalization meets Monday, May 6th, and the BOE will be hearing five appeals. Staff processed senior citizen and disabled veterans' applications, uh, to make sure that they all got included in the certified role. As of yesterday morning, there were thirty-four applications that have an undetermined status and will have to be supplemented in the role throughout the year if they become eligible with the PFD. So, when we're talking budgets and certified roles, we'll have to take those thirty-four, um, applications in mind also. We prepared the staff or the ca... Postcards for mailing, um, they'll be sent to Vista Print tomorrow for the... Our review area, and the new target date for the certified role is May 8th. In Engineering's and Facilities, I wish I knew what all of these buzzwords are. A-H-E-R-A, Inspection Invitation to Bid, was released on, um, April 26th. The Hospital Facilities Advisory Board is meeting on May 13th. That, um, has changed to be in the KIB conference room and not at the hospital. The Solid Waste Contract Committee meets on May 14th in the conference room, and there was no discharge to the environment due to the heavy rainfall at the leachate treatment plant. Staff is working to process as much leachate as they, um... As the plant will allow to reduce the stored quality... Or quantity, sorry. And the ADC... A-D-E-C has given permission to land-spread soils at the long-term care facility site. Finance has been working hard on collecting changes for the Level Two Managers Report. They are, um... The property taxes are in... Will be in their thir... Final thirty-day redemption period for 2022, beginning May 10th. And then Borough Staff is continuing to file small claim documents with the Court for Delinquent Personal Property Accounts. As a side note, Assessing and Finance made, um, courtesy phone calls this week to some of the delinquent people that had, um, outstanding to try and avoid taking them to court. We did try and let people know that their... Those were... That they were delinquent and explain to them how things were going, so... And they are still looking for, uh, an accountant in that position. IT, um, as bad as I don't know all of the buzzwords for facilities, I know no IT language, so they have a really long list, and they're really busy. And Bayside Fire Department, they're working hard to put their newest firefighter safety equipment into service, and they continue to field numerous calls and complaints regarding outside burning of debris, trash, and construction materials, and wanted us to remind residents that they, um... That only clean, dry, natural wood and forest products are allowed to be burned under permit. The Bayside Fire Department will also begin the annual hydrant maintenance, and they ask residents to clear a three-foot wide area around all hydrants near their residences. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions? Larry?
Maybe you could answer this. What does open burning mean? Is burning in a burn barrel open burning, or burning on the ground open burning?
So, you have to pull a permit to burn in a barrel?
You do.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It's either or.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. It's either or.
Oh, Scott, sorry.
Have we heard anything from Interior about the former dormitories?
No.
We have not.
Okay.
Last I talked to Amy, uh, on Tuesday.
Okay, thank you. Maybe we wanna get our lobbyist to nudge and see what...
She's working on it.
Okay.
Larry?
The Emergency Management Training that is going on that you mentioned, um, in your report, um... Are we gonna be able to invite our rural residents to participate in that?
I believe that it is on the website. I will check to make sure tomorrow that it is posted on the website and see if, um, we can have Megan send out maybe something to all the communities to come to do the training.
Just, if I could, just because of my own experience, you know, communicating effectively, uh, it would be much better to make an actual phone call to either the chief of the village or the municipal or corporate leader rather than just sending an email, just to be a more effective invitation. Thank you.
I will do that.
Appreciate that.
Sure.
Steve?
Assembly Member Larry, uh, in response to your question, I've been working in Old Harbor, and I sat in on their city meeting and said it was an unofficial because Assembly had not asked me to, but I felt like I should being on the Assembly and just see what they had to say, and they were... Had some discussions about their emergency thing and a plan they're working on, and I mentioned it was coming up and had not heard about it. The village's safety officer was very interested and would spread the word. I talked to Nova, she transmitted all the information to him, so he has it. He said he'd also talked to some of the other village VPSOs, because even though they worked for Cana and Cana's attending it, they had not been transmitted the information.
Larry?
Thank you. Just taking advantage of this opportunity. Our former, uh, chief at, uh, Bayside, um, if I remember correctly, did a lot of work with rural villages, uh, training and actually visiting the villages and providing a lot of support. I don't know if our new chief has been afforded the opportunity to do so, if he's so interested. I know that was on his own time, but it might be, uh, a good suggestion to take... To provide our rural residents with the expertise of our fire chief at, uh, Bayside. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no others, move on. Messages from the Borough Mayor, no further message at this time. Next item is New Business, Ordinances for Introduction. Ordinance Number FY 2024-17, An Ordinance of the Assembly of the Kodiak Island Borough Amending Title II Administration and Personnel. Section 2.30, Rules of the Assembly, Sections 2.30.060, Order of Business and Agenda, and Section 2.30.070, Ordinances, Resolutions, and Motions to Update Processes for Agenda Setting and Submission of Items. Scott?
Move to amend Ordinance Number FY 2024 hyphen 17, Version 2 by substitution with Version 3.
Second.
Okay. Staff Report.
Mr. Mayor, that's a secondary motion. We need to do the primary motion.
Which is the one right above that. Okay, it's her and skip that.
Move to advance Ordinance Number FY 2024 hyphen 17, Version 2, to public hearing at the next regular meeting of the Assembly.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. I'd have done the same thing you did, Scott, so don't feel bad. Okay, so...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to, uh, move that we substitute Version 3 for Version 2.
Okay, it's been moved to amend by substitution and seconded. So, um, now Staff Report, please. Nova?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, since what we have on the floor now is the substituted version, um, the substitution... Substituted version is the version that came from Assembly Member Griffin, and all the changes that he has made, um, are highlighted in yellow.
Okay. On this Version 3, Jared, would you go ahead and run us through it, please?
It's all cosmetic. I just tried to weed out as much of the legalese as I could and just streamlined the language. I don't... I believe I did not change anything of substance, um, just for... Just readability, so a bunch of line item edits.
Scott?
It was a circumcision, not an amputation.
I guess that's one way of looking at it.
We need more metaphors.
Any, any questions or discussion? Bo?
No, I just want to thank Mr. Griffin. This reads much better to me and kind of makes, it's more concise, so I like this version. Thank you.
Okay, Larry?
I just want to thank our Clerk Nova for all the work that she put in to, from start to finish on this ordinance. It is really great to have a professional clerk who knows what she's doing and can take something and help it guide through the process, so I want to thank her for that.
Okay. Any further questions? Then roll call vote on the motion to amend.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Lidoux?
Yes.
Mr. Sharon?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
No.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes with six yes, one no.
Okay. Now roll call vote on the motion as amended.
Mr. Mayor, is there any other discussion to...
Nobody raised their hand.
No?
I know, but I just moved on. You want to say something, James?
No.
Okay, all right.
Hurry to send her.
Okay, I'm ready to take the vote on the motion as amended. Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Lidoux?
Yes.
Mr. Sharon?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
No.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes with six yes, one no.
Okay. Thank you. Next we have under Other Items is declaring a seat vacant on the Architecture and Engineering Review Board, Building Code, Building Code Board of Appeals. Mr. Cody Allen.
Move to accept the resignation of Mr. Cody Allen on the Architectural and Engineering Review Board Building Code Board of Appeals effective May 3rd, 2024, and direct the Borough Clerk to advertise the vacancy per Borough Code 2.100.070D.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. One thing I would add here is that the reason for the resignation is that Mr. Cody Allen is going to work for the borough and can't serve on the board as an employee, so I'll be looking for someone else there, too. So any further discussion? Roll call vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Lidoux?
Yes.
Mr. Sharon?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
No.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes with six yes, one no.
Thank you. Next item is Citizens Comment. Local phone number is 907-486-3231, toll-free number 855-492-9202. Ask if anybody in the audience would like to come forward at this time. Please do. And also wait just a little bit and see if anybody calls in. Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to Assembly Member Comments. Ryan, I'll start with you.
No comment this evening, thank you.
Scott?
We will have the review, the discussion of the review of the manager and the clerk on the 9th of May, the next meeting. And then we will present the findings on the 16th. So make sure you do your homework and have filled out forms by the 9th. Thank you. The information will be shared.
All right. Larry?
I'm going to refer back to the presentation by Major Davis of the Salvation Army with reference to concerns about the food bank. Just a couple of quick comments. I note that during the COVID crisis, the city using federal funds related to COVID bought a warehouse to store emergency health supplies, you know, related to community health. And I'm just suggesting, if any city is listening, that they might want to consider using that facility perhaps to help do that. The other thing that comes to mind regarding the food bank are other things that are important to our community as we start developing emergency plans related to power, health, utilities, medical aid. But as I say that, you know, we're really the food bank of our rural sites, not just the community of Kodiak, but all of our villages. During the tidal wave, our tsunami in '64, all of our villages were severely impacted. And Kodiak has to be ready to support those needs, whether they're electricity, or utilities, or medical needs. And I hope as we develop a comprehensive plan that we work very, very closely with our rural communities so that we don't have to invent a plan during the middle of a crisis when our people are in need. And so as we do move forward, I hope that we have strong rural representation and we have plans in place. And that, finally in reference to this, that the concern of the food bank is real and that we probably need to work with the city to develop a plan. I do know that during a community-wide tabletop, they indicated at the time, or the city manager, I believe, indicated at the time, that we had an agreement with Safeway at that time to represent our community food needs, that in an emergency crisis, that facility would actually act as a community resource for food. And I don't know if that's been renewed. I don't know the details, but it's something that those who are actually involved in planning could take care of this. The other is, I'll note that it's our annual community cleanup day, and it's also an opportunity for residents to get rid of hazardous waste that's more than 30 pounds a month. Thanks to the borough, I appreciate that, and I hope people take advantage of it. We certainly do not like hazardous waste thrown into dumpsters or into our landfill without being treated. And let's see, oh, and finally, I wanted to thank Assembly Member Ames, who spent some time with the community of Old Harbor, talking to their leadership and presenting a real, a personal invite to that community. I think that that means a lot to our rural residents, and I appreciate your initiative in doing that, and I think that's very, very important. Thank you.
Bo?
Thank you. I just want to remind the public that the Kodiak Island Borough and City of Kodiak Joint Fisheries Work Group is scheduled to meet next Wednesday, May 8th, 2024, at 5:30 p.m. And this meeting will be held in the Borough Conference Room, which is downstairs. I'll add that meetings are, that are usually held in the Assembly Chambers are streamed on the YouTube channel, but since this meeting is going to be held in the conference room, it will not be streamed. So we encourage everyone to attend in person. This includes those who would like to bring topics to the table for the borough and the city for recreational fishing, subsistence, and commercial. Thank you.
Thank you. Jared?
Yeah, a few things. Yeah, if you haven't listened to Chris and Joe from Community Development, their interview on Tuesday, it was, it was great. It was fantastic. I even learned some, some things, so you should definitely check that out. Personally, I want to thank the clerks and the clerk office. I appreciate you guys. You're, you save us so much time in the things that we have to do to prepare. We, I'm really excited to have Cody Allen work with the borough. I've been working with him on the Health Facilities Advisory Board for the past year or so, and he's great. He's going to be a great addition to that department. We saw the, the school district ask come through, and so I have a lot of thoughts on that, but we'll, we'll save that for the actual discussions. But it was, I got to spend some time with the Uzinki and Port Lions Schools, and they, those kids are great and fantastic, and it was a good, good time with them to, you know, keep, keep the village schools also in the front of our minds as we have these conversations, too, and, and their needs. So that was good. And then this weekend, I'm going up to Fairbanks to watch my daughter graduate from college, yay. And because of programs like Jump Start and Alaska Performance Scholarship, UA Scholars Scholarship Program, she is graduating debt-free. She is going to graduate and start and not have, not have that, that debt hanging over. So those programs do work, and they're, they're great investments, so, all right, that's it.
Thank you. Steve?
First of all, I'd like to thank Nova that when they asked for information, be sent to them, I called her and she was, did it right off. The VPSO thanked me for it. He was, he meets all the airplanes, coming and going, and he saw me and thanked me. Also, I can't remember his last name, but Glenn, who does maintenance at the school, come in at the school, is building up to needing painting. He's done the best he can in the few maintenance days he has at the end of the year. He's painted most of one side, one, one urine. He tries to do touch-up. So I'd ask our mayor that when you visit, you're scheduled to visit Old Harbor, I believe, that you take a look at the school. And I don't know the answer either. What is, is painting the school, the borough's responsible, or the school district? But in either case, while you're there, it'd be nice if you'd take a look, and if you have any questions, ask for him. And yeah, so if I'm out there working, I sit in on their meetings, I might as well. Something to do in the evening. We've had a comment on the plastic facility and noise. And I do not know, when someone starts a new business like that on an existing thing, does that require any zoning approval or anything?
Say again, what's your...
About the plastic processing in the tent down on East Point.
No, it's industrial.
Okay. I didn't know whether when you start a new business, other things, because there's both a noise one, and I have a little concern that if they're shredding plastic on the waterfront, is there going to be a plastic dust issue? And I think it's something that should be answered before they do that and blow dust in the ocean. Plastic dust. I mean, they're supposed to be removing plastic from the ocean, or are they going to be adding dust? I don't know the answer. Other than that, no comments.
Thank you, Steve. James?
No comments.
Okay. The next Assembly Work Session is scheduled on Thursday, May 9th, 2024, at 6:30 p.m. in the Borough Assembly Chambers. The next Assembly Regular Meeting is scheduled on Thursday, May 16th, at 6:30 p.m. in the Borough Assembly Chambers. With that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second? Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Thank you all for, for attending it, whether it was on the radio, or live, or on Zoom. Thank you. Good night.